And welcome to the July 22 Maplewood City Council meeting. We have a roomful because we have a very special swearing in happening tonight. Two new officers sitting in our front row. Before we jump ahead onto our agenda, I always like to talk about something from the city of Maplewood that I've observed since our last meeting. And each one of the council members gets an opportunity to write in our Maplewood review. And the last addition, it was my turn. And I wrote about partnerships because I see how many partnerships our city has with so many different public entities and private businesses, companies out there. And really partnerships help our city, I think, be better. It's amazing to me how many partnerships we have. If you're interested in reading my article, it's certainly on the website. But since that article, there were two partnerships that came up recently, and I want to give a shout out to Fire Chief Mandor. He is partnering with, he and our fire department, they're partnering with the Red Cross. And they are out at our manufactured home parks, providing free fire. Do you want to, Chief Mandor, can I have you come up and kind of explain a little bit about it? Because it's a wonderful partnership. And right now, they're doing an effort, working on making sure that our manufactured homes have fire alarm systems in them, and there's no cost to the residents. And so do you want to just tell a little bit about that partnership? Because I think it's really great for our, for our citizens.
Sure, Mayor and Council, thank you for recognizing this outreach. Yes, we've partnered with the Red Cross, so they provide smoke detectors free of charge to the city, and our firefighters go out and do home safety visits. So it's a way for us to engage with the community, but also provide them with a life-saving service. So fire fatalities rise dramatically without the presence of smoke detectors. And in manufactured homes, they go up quickly. So without early detection, the risk of fatality goes up, specifically in those under the age of five or over 65. So this program, free to residents, not just in manufactured homes, but any resident in the city of Maplewood, takes 15 to 30 minutes for our firefighters to come out and provide safety recommendations, install these free of charge. We have other programs that can piggyback onto this, and we encourage all residents to take advantage of it.
Thank you very mu- very much. What a nice partnership that is. We, I also want to shout out to Sergeant Michael Nye, who partnered with not only the car dealerships in Maplewood, because they wrote letters of support for a grant that he applied for with Ramsey County, and our city got the grant. And the grant, Chief, I'm going to call on you for just a moment to talk about that, because that is a fabulous partnership with Ramsey County that is really going to help with the problem in our city with stolen cars and stolen break-ins to vehicles. Do you want to explain that just a little bit?
Mayor, members of the council, it's actually through the state of Minnesota. So when people pay their automobile insurance, they'll see a little piece on the bottom of it, that $1 goes to the theft recovery fund that the state of Minnesota has through the Department of Commerce. And so we in Maplewood believe in being proactive and making sure that we're supporting our businesses. And so our street crimes unit, Sergeant Nye supervising that unit, went to all the different dealerships, and we've been working with them to try and reduce auto thefts and break-ins to cars in our commercial areas. And as a part of that, we knew about this grant opportunity. It's a great opportunity for us to bring in additional resources. We will have a full-time dedicated auto theft and theft from auto officer, $190,000 over the course of the next two years, fully funded by the state of Minnesota. And a lot of that goes back to the partnerships that we're doing with our businesses, making sure we're supporting our businesses, making sure that as we're seeing things that pop up in neighborhoods with cars being broken into, that we are taking and focusing resources there. And I think that the state wanted to support that. But Sergeant Nye did do a great job with that application. Many apply for these types of funds. A few are lucky enough to have an opportunity like this. And so we're very proud of his efforts in this and very optimistic about what we'll be able to do with this position over the next two years.
Thank you. And thank you to staff for finding those partnerships and really developing those so that we can make all sorts of improvements and additions to our community and help our residents. So thank you with that. And with that, let us do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sint, would you please do our roll call tonight?
Councilmember Neblet.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
Councilmember Juneman.
Here.
Mayor Abrams.
Here.
Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Juneman. Any additions to the agenda? Any discussion? Councilmember Juneman.
National night out.
Anything else? Then I would like to add the Sisters of Swing. Any other additions?
Me.
Councilmember Neblet.
I'd like to add the Gold Partners Meeting and the Parks and Rec Meeting.
Okay. Seeing no other lights, all those in favor of, we have to add, I'm sorry, one I didn't quite get that out. We have an amended agenda that, just want to highlight that for people, that we have added number eight.
G8.
Travel expenses. With that inclusion, I think that has been updated on the website, is that right? Okay, thank you. So we are really voting on the amended agenda with the additions that we've talked about tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on to our approval of our minutes. We have the workshop minutes from July 8th. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Approval of the July 8th, 2019 City Council Workshop Minutes. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The July 8th, 2019 City Council Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. We're moving along here to the appointments and presentations, administrative presentations, the council calendar update. Mr. Funk, that is yours tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm sorry, I forgot my microphone. Let me start that over. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's item is to take a look at our upcoming agenda items, and in doing so, it's hard to imagine that I'm saying August 12th is our next meeting, because it felt like it was just July 4th. But August 12th is our next workshop. We do have a continued theme of our 2020 budget presentations, and along with that, you will be hearing from Public Works. They were scheduled to be on tonight's work session, but due to some extended conversations, they are being moved to August 12th. You're also going to be hearing from the Public Safety Department. Mr. Nardot and his team will be presenting, as well as Community Development will be presenting as well. And then I assume all of that's going to be wrapping into a continued conversation. Again, we call it our budget season, around the 2020 budget. Also that evening on August 12th, we do have a council meeting following the workshop. There is two items worth noting. One is the Tobacco 21 discussion, so we will have testimony from both those that are in favor of changes and those that are not, which would be folks also from the business community. And then secondly, pointing out that we also have a conversation on the Nature Center Master Plan. Looking forward beyond August 12th, next meeting after that is August 26th, and then again, after that is September 9th. Our focus in those two meetings will be again around the budget and as we prepare for adoption of the preliminary levy, which is scheduled for September 9th as well. So really budget-heavy discussions coming up in the next three meetings. Moving on into other items that the council has, has discussed is creating a pedestrian safety plan. We do have a study that is underway, and that is scheduled for August 12th. We will be putting that either in the workshop or the council meeting, depending on how much of the agenda comes in alignment. The other thing is on your agenda this evening, and things that you've, items you've brought up in the past, is the new street parking ordinance and some follow-up discussion regarding that. Mr. Nardot has a report for you in tonight's agenda, as well as the excess calls for service. So that was an ordinance that was recently changed. We, as staff, committed to reporting back to you on that. So that again is in tonight's meeting packet. Also, another item, or the last item that I have for you this evening is on licenses. We will be, we don't have an agenda scheduled for that yet, but we will bring that back to you at a future council meeting once we've completed our research. That is tonight, I'm sorry. Thank you for clarifying this, tonight. I'll pause there, and before I talk about some of the upcoming community events, Madam Mayor and Council, this is an opportunity for you to express any interest in other items that I have not brought up here this evening. So if there are other topics for discussion, staff would be interested in knowing that so we can do some research and bring information back to you.
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. I've had some inquiries from election judges. They are wondering if there's a possibility of changing the long day by breaking it into segments. And so we need to do a little homework on, you know, is this something that's statutory? Or is this some rule we set up 45 years ago that could be altered? It is a long day. So I said I would bring it up.
Okay. Ms. Sint, I'm going to look to you. Do you have an answer to that? Or is this something that we want to come back with at another council meeting?
Um, what I, Mayor and Council, what I can say is it is not a requirement that they work the full day. Past practice has been to ask for the full day because it became a logistic nightmare with people having part shifts and with the party balance, that it was difficult at, you know, the day before the election, people calling and saying, "We can't make it, we can't make our shift," and then trying to figure out the party balance for that. That is the information I've been given. I know Ramsey County does do shifts, but we can certainly look at that.
Council Juneman.
Part of this came from the people in the council saying, "Have you noticed the hair color of the average election judge?" And mine being the same color, I couldn't deny it. And so they're saying, they didn't think we should be able, you should be able to do that at all. It's like you still sign up for a shift, and that's the one you have. It's just like when you sign for the whole day, but this one is, you break the day in half. And that there are probably, we have probably enough judges, I believe, and some people have not done it the last couple of elections because it's just too long. So we seem to be eliminating some people. So I, that's why I inquired, and maybe we could talk about how to streamline it.
Seems to me that maybe we want to bring that back. Mr. Funk, if you would put that on our list of council comments, and maybe we can come back with that at a later time.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll do that. We'll, I'll talk with Ms. Sint, her city clerk, and we can add something to our work session agenda and bring back to you just some information about how many staff members we have and some scheduling options.
And then one more piece of this is, and I've thought of this for several years, and personally, I have to, may as well say it, I'm appalled that we ask these same people that start at 5:30 in the morning to show up, to set up everything and break it all down. I think we've, we've gotten to a point in history where we should be paying Public Works people or somebody some overtime to go in and set it up and go in and break it down. I mean, that's just insane. You're there for 14 hours, and then you got to break it all down. Give me a break.
Why don't we add that to the council comments as well? And bring that back?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Last thing I want to mention, Madam Mayor and Council, so thank you for that. Staff will research those items. Just a couple notes on some upcoming calendar events. First off, tomorrow morning, we have the Governor Walls at the White Bear Chamber event. So that is tomorrow at 8 o'clock at the Maplewood Community Center slash YMCA. And then want to note that we do have some events that is being hosted and facilitated by our Public Safety Department, which is a touch of truck on the 24th, and then also the Maple Pond Department's Outreach on the 30th. So two events coming up, and want to thank our Public Safety Department for scheduling those. I think Councilmember Juneman is going to talk about National Night Out, so I'll let her mention that.
Chief is presenting.
Okay. The chief is going to be talking about National Night Out in a few minutes, and that kind of gets us out in the next couple of weeks. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Council presentations. Councilmember Juneman, do you want to talk a little bit about it, and then we'll shift it over to the chief?
Well, two weeks from tomorrow night is it, every year at this time. It's time to sign up for National Night Out. I would encourage you, it seems that neighborhoods aren't neighborhoods as much anymore as they used to be, and this is the night when you can set aside time to meet with your neighbors. And if you live in a good neighborhood like I do, they have a wonderful potluck. We got good cooks. So it's an excuse to get together and eat some good food and learn who each other is. It's fine to do Neighbor Next Door and all online, but there is no substitute for knowing who your neighbors are, and maybe just a little bit about their schedules and what seems normal and what seems abnormal. And perhaps when the dark blue van backs into your neighbor's driveway and empties the house while they're on vacation, you could maybe interrupt it and call 911. And sometimes you don't know that if you don't know who your neighbors are.
Thank you. I just want to add to that for our new council members that, well, and for our residents, if you go on our city website, there are already a number of neighborhoods that have already registered to be a National Night Out site. And I know that the Police Department and the Fire Department will try like crazy to get out there and stop at those registered events, those neighborhood parties. Council members, the staff is always really good about giving council members a map of the city that has all of the possible National Night Out events around the city on it. And I will tell you from my experience, pick an area that is a relatively close area, and maybe you can get to six or seven events. But anything beyond that, I think, is unrealistic. And if you count for driving time, you're really going to cut down the number of neighborhoods that you can stop at for a visit with our residents. So staff, I'm sure will be getting that calendar, that map out to all of us. And it really is a fun night. It's, it is a great way to meet neighbors. So Chief, do you want to mention just a little bit about it, too?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, community outreach is really a cornerstone of what we seek to do in Maplewood Public Safety. And so it's a great night for us in the, in the Police Department and in the Fire Department to be out and meeting with the folks in our neighborhood. There's always great conversations that emerge from that. It's a good opportunity for us to get to know the citizens that we work for. It's a good to have some back and forth about what concerns do they have in their neighborhood or what's going really well in their neighborhood. And like Councilmember Juneman stated, with today's busy pace of society, it's really easy to lose track of, you know, who lives three, four doors down, you know, when they go on vacation, do they have a house sitter, you know, really just neighbors taking that time and being intentional and spending some time together, getting to know each other, and building those relationships. And so Maplewood, as everyone knows, is an amazing city. It's a great opportunity to get to know the people in your neighborhood. You can still register for parties online through the Police Department's website. If anyone has questions about that, they're free to call the Police Department, and we're happy to work with them to help them through that process. I think at present, we have 60 or 70 maybe parties registered, so it's going to be another great year, and we're really looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Smith, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I don't know if I have a strong feeling about this one way or the other, but in the past, we've sort of gotten a list, and it's just sort of been up to council members to sort of go wherever. And I think that's fine. I'm just wondering if we have any appetite to coordinate efforts to hit important places, or if there's particular outreach hotspots we want to make sure we cover, or somehow coordinate our efforts just to make sure we have good coverage in across the city, or if we want to just leave it the way it is.
Councilmembers, any thoughts on that?
I've been, I've been to every neighborhood over the years.
Yeah, you've hit every neighborhood at least once.
Like I said, I just, I want to make sure that we have good representation and coverage and have our sort of ears out across the city. But I've had a, like, a couple of years I've had where, like, I know Mary Lee and I showed up to the same events at the same times, and probably a lot of parties didn't get anyone there, and...
That's assuming they want one of us there.
Well, fair enough. Yeah, it's, it's usually pretty clear within a couple of minutes of getting there where you're like, "Well, just stop by." Go on. Clearly, no one wants me here.
Do you have any suggestions on how that might be accomplished? Recognizing, well, go ahead.
Staff time, and, yeah, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's a, is there a opportunity for us to identify, like, you know, the, the top 10 or 12 can't-miss ones and, and split those out, or...
Well, tell you what, I would venture to say that all of them are equally as important.
Fair enough.
But maybe what we could do is if we know, because I've already been asked to come to three of them, that I've been to in the past, so those are going to be ones that I stop by. Maybe what we could do, is there a way where council members could maybe initial the ones or let you know which ones we plan on going to, so that once we get the map sent out to us? Is that a possibility, Mr. Funk? And that way, we can try to, to kind of space it out a little bit?
Like a fantasy football draft.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. It's one way to do it. Mr. Funk, what do you think?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, the council. I'm, I'm going to punt this one over to you, using the football analogy, punt this over to, to the chief, because the Police Department puts together the map for us.
Ah, sure.
So they're, they work with our GIS folks, and so they map all of that out. And we, as staff, also get really involved in it. And so at some of our internal meetings, we, as staff, and a lot of our department heads are also out and about, so we try to coordinate and, and spread ourselves out as well. And so I'm going to turn to the chief to see if there's a way we can get the map to you, council, so maybe you can identify some areas, and we can filter that to make sure there's no overlap.
No overlap. Chief, what do you have to say?
Mayor, members of the council, we don't like to get the map out too early, because then parties come in at the last minute and they're not on your list. But we'll see if we can get that a couple of days earlier to you. It might be a little more incomplete, but if the council wants to then respond to us and let us know what parties you're going to, we can try and assemble a list with which parties different council members are going to, if, if that's the wish of the council.
That sounds like a plan. Okay, thank you. Next event, I wanted to mention the Sisters of Swing. It is the story of the Andrews Sisters. It is a show that's being presented over at the Bruin Troop Farm, which is our historical farm here in Maplewood. The farm itself is actually owned by the city of Maplewood, but it is leased for 99 years to our Maplewood Historical Society. And they put together what I thought was a fabulous show. I went on Saturday night, and I couldn't have been happier. It was completely entertaining, great singers, and it's a story of the Andrews Sisters, which they were, you know, a national act back in the 40s, I believe. And they're, the Andrews Sisters were actually from Mount Minnesota. And so it, it was a really great presentation. And I did ask, they do have a few seats left for this weekend. It's available Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at our barn, which is a great summer venue. It was a beautiful night and a lot of fun. So please get out there, support the Sisters of Swing, and go have a fun night. Councilmember Neblet, you're on for Gold Partner Meeting and the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that I did go to the Gold Line Partners Meeting on the 11th. And I didn't realize it, but this group has been meeting for nine years. And the meeting on the 11th was the next to the last meeting. They are going to continue to meet, but reconfigured in a different way, so that the people that have been involved from the beginning, from counties, cities, residents, and businesses, will still be involved, but just in a different configuration. They're getting close to getting ready to start digging. So it's really an exciting time, and their last meeting is October the 10th. I also went to the Park and...
Just one quick question. For some people watching, do you want to remind them what the Gold Line is?
It is part of the, I want to say the initials...
BRT.
Thank you. BRT also stands for...
Bus Rapid Transit.
Thank you. Bus Rapid Transit. And the Gold Line comes from St. Paul, and it will go to Woodbury. And what did you say, Councilmember Juneman?
Councilmember Juneman?
On the north side of 94.
Yeah. So it stops out at 3:00 M. We've got, I think, two stops in, in the city of Maplewood.
Uh huh. So it's really exciting. It's an exciting time, so, but nine years they've been working on this, and it's just about ready to come to fruition. They also talked about that it would take, once construction starts, it'll take close to about four years. Park and Rec Commission meeting. The Nature Center presented their master plan, and it was approved by the Park and Rec Commission. The one thing that came out of that meeting, besides the fact that the Nature Center basically has three employees and tons of volunteers, the amazing things that they do for the city is unbelievable. And they, they do it, it seems like effortlessly, but there's a lot of work that goes into this, this organization for the city. The one thing that I heard over and over and over and over again is that they need a vehicle. Something that they can cart around their equipment for programming, because right now they use their own vehicles. One of the commissioners had a great idea, I thought, that possibly one of the car companies would like to donate a van and still have their logo on it for the Nature Center to use. I think they're going to probably look into that. I hope they do, being that we've had, started to have discussions around our tight budget. And they need, but they need a van. They need something to work with, so. I got, I was really glad that I had a chance to hear, hear the wonderful things that they're doing. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Juneman.
Just a little follow-up to that. As part of the master plan, we're trying to figure out how to reach the greatest number of people. And as you know, we now have the Fish Creek area, and they go to some of our parks. And instead of having to build any more kind of satellite facilities or whatever, it makes more sense, that's where that idea came from, just to have something where they can cart all their stuff and take it to wherever they're going. And so something has to be done somewhere along the line, because... they're going. And so something has to be done somewhere along the line, because their outreach has outgrown them.
And I'm sure that that will be coming to us in the, in the near future. Okay, moving on, we have the reason why everyone, I think, is, almost everyone, is sitting in our audience tonight.
Can you hear the council?
I don't think so. I think they came in for the swearing-in ceremony, which I have to tell you is always one of the favorite nights of the council. We are going to be swearing in two officers tonight. And Chief Nadeau, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Mayor members of the council, it's a big night for Maplewood Public Safety and the Maplewood Police Department, as tonight, we bring before you our two newest police officers. And again, I'm here to tell you that although we see problems nationally and in Minnesota trying to find good, quality, ethical, bright, community-centered people that want to be law enforcement officers, we in Maplewood continue to buck that trend. We have worked very, very hard through programs like Pathways to Law Enforcement and in what I like to call Building the Bench. And by Building the Bench, I mean bringing people in in entry-level positions, making sure they're acclimated to the work environment, making sure that they understand what it means to work in Maplewood, and what our philosophies are as a community, and how we see law enforcement. And I'm happy to say that both Connor and Gustavo are CSOs, although Gustavo only for several months. So tonight, we are doing a swearing-in, and we will do them one by one, just so that everyone in the audience kind of knows how this goes. We will call them up individually. I will read some things to introduce them to our community. There will then be a swearing-in with Andrea Sint, our city clerk. After that, we have a badge-pinning ceremony, obviously the badge being very symbolic of who we are in law enforcement and the community's trust. And so they'll have an opportunity to call up a family member, a friend, or somebody to do that. So tonight, we'll start with Connor Salcho. Connor, if you could step up. Connor Salcho grew up in and around Maplewood. He attended presentation in Hill Murray High School in Maplewood. Connor enjoyed playing hockey, baseball, and football growing up. He was involved in scouting and enjoys snowmobiling and fishing. One of Connor's role models growing up was a Ramsey County Sheriff's Office Sergeant, who I believe is here tonight, Mr. Cavanado, person I went to the police academy with. I apparently stayed longer than Kevin did in law enforcement. He was the smart one, perhaps. Connor realized the positive impact that he could have as a police officer on a community, and wanted to be that role model for others and to make a positive impact in the Maplewood community. Connor attended Winona State University for the first three semesters of college, where he was a member of the Criminal Justice Club, club hockey team, and volunteered with the Winona Police Department as a reserve officer. He then transferred to Metropolitan State University, where he earned his Bachelor of Science in Law Enforcement and received a minor in Psychology. Connor has worked for five years as a seasonal employee with Maplewood's Park Maintenance Department. He's also been a volunteer police reserve with the Maplewood Police Department for two and a half years, where he held the rank of sergeant and enjoyed mentoring new reserve officers. Connor has been a community service officer with Maplewood Police Department for about one and a half years. While working as a CSO, he enjoyed learning about policing, serving Maplewood's community, training other new CSOs, and taking part in the various community outreach opportunities. Connor is excited to be a Maplewood police officer and to serve the community he grew up in. One interesting fact about Connor is that in the fifth grade, he went through the Maplewood Police Department's DARE program with recently-retired Maplewood Police Officer Alicia Metry. One thing I thought was interesting about Connor was after his psychological examination, I got a phone call from his psychologist, who said she couldn't help but chuckle a little bit as Connor was talking, because he reminded her of a young Scott Nadeau, the mannerisms, the speech. And so I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but certainly, to be compared to Connor, made me proud to be a police officer. So Andrea Sint will now come up and read Connor the oath of office.
Raise your right hand. I, Connor Salcho, do solemnly swear...
I, Connor Salcho, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...and of the state of Minnesota...
And of the state of Minnesota...
...and faithfully discharge...
Faithfully discharge...
...the duties of police officer...
The duties of police officer...
...in the city of Maplewood...
The city of Maplewood...
...in the county of Ramsey...
In the county of Ramsey...
...and the state of Minnesota...
And the state of Minnesota...
...to the best of my judgment...
To the best of my judgment...
...and ability...
And ability...
...so help me God. Congratulations.
Connor will be proudly wearing badge number 483 for the Maplewood Police Department, serving our community. And Connor, is there somebody that you would like to step up and pin the badge on?
Try to make it easier for him.
Gustavo, could you come up, please? His name is Gustavo, but he's known to his friends as Gus. Gustavo was born in Sioux City, Iowa, but moved to Faribault, Minnesota, when he was in grade school. He attended Minnesota State University Mankato and graduated in 2016 with a Bachelor of Science in Law Enforcement. Gustavo joined the Faribault Police Explorers when he was 14 years old, and it was there that he discovered his passion for law enforcement. Gus participated in the Police Explorer Program in Faribault for eight years, and also served as a reserve officer in Faribault while attending College of Mankato. Gustavo worked as a security officer for Alina Health while attending school in Mankato. Following college, he decided to continue his career with Alina and worked at United Hospital, right? Gustavo has gained a lot of knowledge and experience working with people of all backgrounds, including mental illness and chemical dependencies, and plans to translate all of these acquired skills into his career with the Maplewood Police Department. He was hired as a CSO with our department in April, and has very much enjoyed the experience and the knowledge acquired in preparation for his position as a police officer. Gustavo is looking forward to his career in Maplewood and is very excited to promote community engagement. Two interesting facts about Gustavo is that he's first-generation American and is bilingual, as he speaks Spanish. And he's also been dating his wife since the eighth grade. That's impressive. That's dedication. So the one thing I will say about Gustavo is my best friend, former police officer, is the head of Alina Security. He has over 400 security guards. And when he found out that Gustavo was interviewing with us, he said, "Whatever you do, do anything you can to hire Gustavo. He's probably one of the best, sharpest young men that works for me." So it was quite a tribute. So Gus is, we'll have Andrea step up, and we will swear you in.
Raise your right hand. I, Gustavo Perez, do solemnly swear...
I, Gustavo Perez, do solemnly swear...
...that I will support...
That I will support...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and of the state of Minnesota...
And of the state of Minnesota...
...and faithfully discharge...
And faithfully discharge...
...the duties of police officer...
The duties of police officer...
...in the city of Maplewood...
In the city of Maplewood...
...in the county of Ramsey...
In the county of Ramsey...
...and the state of Minnesota...
And the state of Minnesota...
...to the best of my judgment...
To the best of my judgment...
...and ability...
And ability...
...so help me God...
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Gus, is there somebody that'd like to come up and pin your badge? I'd like to point out to the council that in 2012, due to some budget cuts, we went down from 54 to 52 police officers. Through the actions of this council, we are now going back to 54 officers. And I couldn't be happier about the young men that we have now chosen to be a part of the Maplewood community and all the great things that are happening there. So if the new officers want to come up, we will get a photograph with council. Thank you to all the family.
We fully understand that you can now leave. We are not offended by the least. So, yeah. Thank you for coming tonight.
All right, moving on to our agenda, we might as well get prepared. We have a presentation from the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce. Shannon Watson is going to be presenting to us. Shannon, if you want to come up to the podium, we'll wait just a moment and then let the doors close. Thank you very much.
See, you're not insulted but me. People didn't want to watch my presentation.
We do.
Yeah, that's what counts.
We do.
Okay. All right. Are we queued up?
Do you want to introduce yourself, please?
Absolutely. Mayor and council members, my name is Shannon Watson. I am the Director of Public Affairs for the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce.
We...
Fantastic. Thank you for allowing me to spend a few minutes giving some updates on the chamber. We are the St. Paul Area Chamber of Commerce. From my perspective, the "area" part of our name is the most important, because although our office is in St. Paul and St. Paul is in our name, our work, as you know, extends well beyond the bounds of St. Paul. I like to say that we meet our members where they're at. Our primary footprints are in Washington, Ramsey, and Dakota Counties, but we're really all over the East Metro and definitely in Maplewood. Maplewood and SPAC have a great history of working together, and I can tell you, we absolutely value your partnership. You do have a chamber serving Maplewood, even though Maplewood isn't in the name. We leverage relationships at all levels of business and government. We say we're a business advocate to government, but we're also a government advocate to business. You run your city, and we have your back. You have questions, we'll find the answers. We can be a source of information for you and a partner sharing information from you. Chambers are all about promoting and expanding on opportunities for business. This is an ongoing cycle and requires healthy partnerships between employers, employees, government, and community. We do advocacy at the city, county, state, and federal levels. We work one-on-one with individual SPAC members on their specific issues, and in partnership and coalitions for policy changes that have a broader impact or wider reach, such as we did with Keep Minnesota Moving, which is a group that works on transit funding, including your ABRT. We regularly engage with policymakers like your council, both to develop and strengthen relationships, but also to help you craft ordinances and rulemaking early in the process. We convene small group conversations involving SPAC members in specific industries or with particular subject matter expertise to help you learn ahead of time about impacts of policies on employers. Sometimes as intended and sometimes unintended consequences come up. This picture is from one of these small group convenings we did with the Deed Commissioner, Steve Grove, back in February, right after he had been announced. They're talking about state innovation. We did one of these meetings last week on food trucks versus brick-and-mortar restaurants. So that was a fun one. Maplewood and SPAC have an ongoing partnership in the BRENA work. The visits demonstrate to business that we acknowledge their value and appreciate them investing here and being part of the Maplewood community. They are an opportunity to identify and provide support in areas where barriers or changes happen for our business community. We support businesses in their pursuit to grow and expand and proactively become aware of possible relocation issues that might take them out of the East Metro. Let me try to squash those. Keep them here. We identify potential supply chain connections, and the visits allow us to tell the story of the city and all of the exciting things happening in the community. SPAC presents and partners on over 120 events per year, with attendance from about 30 people to over 800, with the goals of educating, elevating, advocating, and celebrating. Events are valuable both for the programming content, but also as networking opportunities where you can meet SPAC members and other elected officials who are interested in the issues that you are interested in. For example, we have two events coming up in August. One is about recreational marijuana. It's not a conversation for or against, but the question, if legalization were to happen in Minnesota, what would businesses need to know? The Business Education Series, in which we partner, is another example of that. We're talking about affordability of health care, and one of our panelists is going to be the CEO of MinSure. So that will be a great opportunity to get information right directly to small businesses. We work in partnership with counties to affect positive change within businesses and organizations, and provide opportunities to support programs such as workplace wellness and biz recycling. We have multiple communication channels that we use to get important information out, like our Friday Facts newsletter, our monthly advocacy newsletter, our East Metro Voter Guide, which several of you have been in, thank you, and social media, including Facebook and Twitter and Instagram and LinkedIn. So that's my really quick overview of SPAC. We are the East Metro, we are Maplewood, we are your Chamber of Commerce, and we stand ready and willing to help in any way we can, so please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you much for your time.
Thank you. Shannon, do you want to wait? Maybe there might be a couple of questions. I wanted to certainly make a comment and invite my fellow council members to attend some of the BRENA...
E and A.
Yes. Events. I know I'm signed up in the next month to go out to Community Dental and also Crooked Pint. And for our newest council members, it's in the morning, but it is...
We might have scheduled that on purpose.
You know, they're an important partner. Okay, I'm just going to leave that alone. But they were, they're two events. And do you want to kind of explain, because I'd like to encourage my fellow council members to jump on board. I know when Tong from your office sends out the emails, I try to look and see if there's ones that I can attend. Do you want to explain what those are? Because it's a great opportunity to go out and go to one of our businesses, and really, your offices help run the business and collect data on the businesses. Can you explain just a little bit?
Absolutely. So we reach out to businesses. One of the things that we have found when partnering with different municipalities is when the city calls up a business and says, "Hey, we want to come visit," they freak out and they say, "Why?" Like, they assume it's regulatory, and it's not. And if the chamber calls up and says, "Hey, we want to come visit your business," they're like, "Oh, okay." So we say, "Hey, all right, we're going to come. We're going to bring our city partners with us." So it's just an opportunity to sit down to see what is going on with the business, what their challenges are. Workforce has been a big one that has been coming up over the last couple of years. But there's always individual little things that come up. You know, people say, "Well, you know, since you're here, I have the question," or, "Well, this happened once upon a time." It's also a good time to just further those relationships with the city. So our internal process is that Tong works with the, works with the city staff and within our staff to find calendar times that work for everybody, and then reaches out to the businesses and sort of plugs those holes, and then sends them out to the council. So if you can get council representation at those visits, that's always kind of a fun thing to do. I've never had a meeting that's gone bad. It's always usually a really positive experience, and people are kind of excited to come out.
And they last approximately an hour?
An hour, yeah.
And so it's not a huge time investment, but I think it's a great connection to make with our businesses, and you can learn about what their needs are. And I think it's a great opportunity. So I would encourage anyone, when you see those invites from Tong, check your schedule and see if you're able to make one of those, because I think you'll really enjoy it. So, thank you, Shannon, for coming tonight.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, based on our amended... Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, based on our amended agenda, we have eight items. Does anyone have any that they would like to highlight or address? Councilmember Juneman.
Do you think we should highlight number three, just briefly, since it was brought up by us to look at this again? It might be enlightening.
Number three, is that going to be? The chief, Mr. Nadeau, are you, Chief Nadeau, are you prepared to talk about that?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Tonight before you on the consent agenda was an item where the council had asked the police department to provide an update on two new ordinance changes. One was the overnight parking. I can address that one first. The spirit and intent of the ordinance was that there were some people that, for various reasons, had hardship, where they had vehicles that they were not able to park in their driveway at different times of the year. And so the council amended the ordinance, so you can still call or go online with the police department, and for up to 14 days at no charge, you can park on the street. You just have to let us know your vehicles and your address. This would be common for people out of town visiting, if you were having your driveway resurfaced, if you had to have a dumpster in your driveway, there could be any variety of reasons. So, that part didn't change, but we also wanted to provide an avenue for people. Let's say that there was an apartment building that had far too many cars and not enough spaces that people could apply for a permit. So, after the first six months of that ordinance, the police department did receive two applications. However, both were denied because neither of the people that applied could present a hardship. So, the way that we had framed it was that if people had a hardship or they needed to park on the street, and it wasn't just for the sake of convenience, that they could apply for a permit. However, both of those were denied. In the second ordinance, we did pass an excessive calls-for-service ordinance. Really, this is just a way to try and make sure that people are making reasonable use of public safety resources. In the first two quarters, so the first half of the year, there were 84 letters that were sent out. So 59 were first violation letters. One of the benefits of that is sometimes we would send it to the property owner. They would then in turn call the police department and say, "Hey, what's going on?" We could exchange information about what types of issues we were seeing on the property. There were only nine second violation letters, so most of the people that got this nuisance call-for-service letter, whether it was an apartment building or a business or a single-family home, took care of it right at that first letter. We did have nine second letters, so they got a first letter, and then we would follow up with a second letter. There is no fine or fee for the two letters, but there were five that got a third violation letter, and that would have been accompanied by a bill for $250. Interestingly enough, there were 11 letters for four or more violations, which also were included with the bill, but 10 of the 11 letters went to the same address, which is an issue that we're having, the city's having, or the police department's having with a particular concern revolving around a business use and some noise violations. And so, I think that it is, it is going much as the council would have intended. Most people, after being notified that there's a problem, are taking care of it right away. This is not a tool that gets used, you know, often, but it is a nice tool to have for people that are having persistent issues on their property. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that would come from the council.
Any questions, council? Thank you very much for highlighting that. I'd also like to at least bring to the council's attention, we've added, we amended the agenda because an opportunity came up. I was alerted by Ramsey County that there is a tour that they are putting together in Richmond, Virginia, of a BRT project that is remarkably similar to the rush line that we are working on here in Maplewood. And so Ramsey County has actually put forward a grant, and a $1,000 grant, which I expect is going to pay for the brief trip to Richmond, Virginia, to take a look at the BRT so that I can come back and report what that looks like. It's one thing to be looking at all of the plans and the diagrams and, you know, the computer-projected ideas of what the BRT will look like. It's a whole other thing to actually see it take place. And the one that is in Richmond is supposed to be very similar to our rush line that's going to be going and connecting from St. Paul out to White Bear Lake, and that occurs in October. But in the event that there is anything above the $1,000, then it would be paid for by the city, but it's fully expected by Ramsey County that the $1,000 will cover it. So. Do I have a motion for, oh, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. If it's okay with you, I'd like perhaps ask Chief Mandar a couple of questions on G5.
Okay. Chief Mandar.
Thank you, Chief. I'm supportive of the fee increase. It seems reasonable based on our, the length of our relationship. I just had a couple of questions around billing generally and how confident we are that we are, I'm less concerned about the fees as I am about, are we capturing as much revenue as we think we should be capturing? Is there opportunities for improvement there? I know, I'm under the understanding that Medicare billing for ambulance services can be really complex and difficult, and there's a risk of losing revenue without best practice billing in there. Have we done a review of kind of from a performance perspective, less so from a cost perspective?
Chief Mandar, what do you have to say?
Mayor, Councilmember Smith, that is a great question. Ambulance billing is very complex with Medicare rules. We expect to collect between 33% and 30% of what is actually billed due to mandatory Medicare write-offs. That being said, our amount of bad debt or uncollectible is around, just, adjusts between 3% and 7% usually, which is, in my conversations with my colleagues and reading nationwide, seems to be reasonable for their service. Our average cash, on the other hand, continues to go up each year, and this company has, I would say, a respectful but firm approach to working with our clients, so there's certainly hardship that people can apply for, but they're not going to just push over and let bills lay uncollected. Some of these claims, like auto claims, the first person to the claim gets, is going to get the money, so they're very aggressive in that manner where they need to be, but also work with our clients to make sure that where circumstances exist where they need a hardship, that they work with them professionally.
Great, thank you. That first person to the money part was the one I've heard the most about, and so that's great to hear. I'd say, let's keep a close eye on those benchmarks and make sure, you know, because from my perspective, I would rather, if it made sense, you know, to pay a little bit more for an agency that's getting us a lot more revenue, that's fine, so.
And when looking at our comparables, you know, we look at the city of Burnsville, Edina, Oakdale, Woodbury, White Bear Lake, certainly, we're paying, even with the increase, quite a bit less. After the report, there's one city that's paying $70,000 more than we're paying for similar services and similar cash and similar bad debt. So, it's certainly something we keep an eye on. We don't want to get cozy with any of our vendors by any means. Before we made this recommendation, a lot of research, we'd met with the finance director, public safety director, and myself, and we do believe that this is a good utilization of resources.
Great. I know how challenged we are with the economics of ambulance services and, you know, ethically driving collections of services rendered is a lot easier than us creating new efficiencies and new ways of doing things, and so I think this is one of those low-hanging fruit areas financially. I think we can definitely keep our eye on it. Sounds like you're doing an awesome job, so that's great news, but, you know, I'd just say, let's keep our eye on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmembers, do I have a motion?
I move approval of consent agenda items G1 through 8.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith, consent agenda items 1 through 8. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move on to a, our public hearing tonight, and the, I wanted to kind of go over a little bit about what is going to be happening tonight for the public hearing, that we're going to have a staff report from Mr. Beatty, and then, once Mr. Beatty completes his staff report, then council, if we have any questions, we can talk to Mr. Beatty and ask his questions. I will then open up the public hearing using the gavel, and from there, each member who signs up at the back, City Clerk Sint will take the sign-up list, and then each person who signs up will have three minutes in order to present on the issue that is before us tonight. Then, from there, once the public hearing, well, I'll conclude the public hearing once everyone has an opportunity to speak, and councilmembers, I'll just tell you that I've learned that we do not have to gavel it three times, so I'm very glad about that. I'll just simply close the public hearing, and then we will give Mr. Beatty an opportunity to respond to any questions that come up during the public hearing, and councilmembers, if we have any other questions at that time, then we will consider those. And from there, we have three recommended actions tonight that are before us, so that's kind of a little thumbnail on what's going to happen. We're going to start with Mr. Beatty tonight.
Mayor, quick point of order. Is this one public hearing and three actions?
It is one public hearing and three actions.
Thank you.
Mr. Beatty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. Well, as the mayor indicated, this is sort of a culmination, in a way, of some discussions that we've had before with the council. I made a presentation a year ago, June, on this matter, and again last November, and what we talked about at that time was the fact that the city has divided its, or failed to combine, I guess is the better way to express it, its powers in terms of development and redevelopment. The city created Housing and Redevelopment Authority in 1974. It created an Economic Development Authority in 2009, but failed to combine those two, so that the powers under each of those statutes was, was not combined, and different bodies exercised them. The city transferred the HRA powers to its Housing and Economic Development Committee in 2012, but again, kept the powers separate. What you've got before you tonight, again, kind of a culmination of what we've talked about in the past, is a modified enabling resolution. That's the statutory method by which an EDA is created, and what it does is combine both EDA and HRA powers. EDAs have become the preferred development entity for cities because they allow the body to operate with HRA powers, EDA powers, and the powers granted to cities under the Cities Development Act. So in other words, it gives the entity the broadest range of powers as possible. I've called this culmination, but in many ways, it's really just the beginning, because I think this, this will be the launch of what's going to be a more active and engaged EDA. The, the document in front of you, the Modified Enabling Resolution, creates an EDA composed of five members, the city council, which is currently the case. It includes some statutory provisions. It includes a few limitations, which I think are consistent with what is commonly in these resolutions. Not a lot of restrictions, because I don't think that's necessary when the EDA is the city council. You don't have to check yourselves to the same degree that you might in other contexts. It makes, it makes clear the fact that this replaces the current enabling resolution, and so after it's adopted, if it is, then it becomes the operative document. So as the mayor laid out, it's required by statute to hold a public hearing for consideration of the enabling resolution. That's the only subject of the public hearing. After the conclusion of the public hearing, if it be your choice, you can adopt the enabling resolution. Another item on the agenda after that would be to adopt an ordinance which repeals sections of current code, which would become inconsistent or which are inconsistent with the amended enabling resolution. And finally, there's a resolution to authorize publication of that ordinance by title and summary, because it's about seven pages long, and we, we do that in the case of lengthy ordinances. So, with that, that's my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Question, I just had, I think I got it, but I'll just, I'll just start there. In the resolution, under Section 203B, I mean, 2.03, and then under Section 3.01D, 2.03 says, "Mida shall consist of governing body of five commissioners. Commissioners shall be the members of the Maplewood City Council." Drop down, and it said, "Mida must obtain approval of the city council for all planned activities for influencing the actions of any other government..." Is that? Aren't we?
Yes, you are.
So is that, am I just not understanding why that is written like that, or?
Mr. Beatty, can you respond?
Yeah, council, Madam Mayor, council, good question. You know, I said that some of the provisions in here are statutory, and there are other a couple sort of standard conditions. That's kind of a standard condition, that, you know, what it basically says is you can't issue bonds unless the city council approves. You can't go off and do lobbying unless the city council approves. You have to comply with the comprehensive plan of the city, probably duplicative, but again, they're standard provisions.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Councilmembers, any other questions for Mr. Beatty? Hearing done, then we are going to, I will open up the public hearing. City Clerk Sint, do we have anyone signed up? We have one individual signed up, Kevin Bergland. Mr. Bergland, do you want to come to the microphone, please? Please start by stating your name.
As you said it, supposed mayor, Kevin Bergland, Citizens Reporter News. A launch, you've heard it, a launch of a more broad set of powers. Do we need to give any more powers to our finance director and our city manager with the disaster they've made on the redevelopment? Or the city council? You know that there's a commission to look at this right now, the Hetsi. You've, this is a commission made up of residents. You've taken them out of the picture, and you've put the finance director and the city manager in the driving space, a mistake. They have only been a series of poor public policy, a disaster. This council, of course, there's only two of you out of the five who are legitimately here. Three of you are appointed members, representing the finance director and the city manager rather than the citizens. Of course, there was an elected person, and you-
Mr. Bergland, could you please let us know, what do you think about the resolution modifying the enabling resolution regarding the Maplewood Economic Development Authority? What's your position on that?
Mayor, I would request you would not interrupt my presentation. This is a public forum, and stop it. As I told you, it's poor and it's the wrong direction. Do I need to more clear? Because it adds more powers in a system that rigged the election, along with the good government, supposed good government, Ramsey County, to put people in here away from people who really won. You cheated the disabled.
Mr. Bergland, what do you believe, then, is the alternative to the enabling resolution? I'm trying to understand your position.
You need to direct your city manager and your finance director, when you purchased those Gladstone properties and did it under the cloak of secrecy and concealment, without having the Hetsi Commission involved, you need to bring them through these poor decisions so they can look at them and- so they can look at them and analyzing instead of rigging them, which this council has a history of doing. You took the election away from a disabled young lady who won this election-
Mr. Burgland, the public hearing tonight is concerning the enabling resolution regarding the Maplewood Economic Development Authority. Would you please contain your comments to your opinion on that particular issue tonight?
I'm asking you once again to stop interrupting, because you are taking parts of my valuable three minutes away, and that is a disservice to the public-
Mr. Burgland, your time is up. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
There are no other people that are signed up? Is there anyone in the audience who would also like to present tonight? Then, seeing none, one time only, I'm going to close the public hearing tonight. Mr. Beatty, would you respond to the comments that were made during the public opinion part of our meeting tonight?
Mayor and Council, that's somewhat difficult. You know, the city council has always been the Economic Development Authority. And to the extent that you've acted in that context, really, there's nothing that's going to change. What's going to happen as a result of this modification, if it's adopted, is that the EDA will also have HRA powers. Basically, the HRA allows development and redevelopment, particularly for low and moderate income housing. Those will be married to the broader economic development powers of an EDA. So, the council will continue in its role, but have a broader set of powers available to it.
Mr. Beatty, I know that you and your firm represent other cities. Is this marriage, as it were, between the HRA and the EDA? Is that anything that is unusual?
Madam Mayor and Council, no. In fact, that's the standard procedure. I was quite surprised when I started looking at this a year and a half or more ago, to find out that Maplewood had not done that. Historically, HRAs were the first development entity. That statute was passed in the 1940s, and for many years, that was sort of the only method for cities to engage in economic development. When EDAs became popular, probably in the 1980s, their popularity really stemmed from what we've talked about, the ability to operate in three distinct areas, under three statutes. And so, in my experience, and I do represent a number of EDAs in cities really all over the state, this is exactly the standard format. It's nothing unusual.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty. Council members, do you have any other questions? Okay, then, council members, we have three recommended actions in front of us. There's a, I'm sorry, Councilmember Juneman, I didn't see your light.
Thank you. To solve a, I think, misleading question, does this change any of the responsibilities of our Hetsi Commission?
Mr. Beatty.
Madam Mayor and Council, well, they are no longer going to be the HRA. You are now going to be the HRA. It's not clear to me that they've used those powers in the recent past. One of the things that I've included in the resolution is, and probably wasn't necessary, I think you had that authority anyway, was a specific provision that the EDA will be able to have whatever advisory commissions it wishes to have. And so, you can continue to use Hetsi in any way you want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any other questions? Then, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the resolution modifying the enabling resolution regarding the Maplewood Economic Development Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Neblet. Motion to adopt the resolution modifying the enabling resolution regarding the Maplewood Economic Development Authority. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The second recommended action-
To adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 4 of the city code by repealing Division 8 regarding the Maplewood Area Economic Development Authority and amending Division 9 regarding the Maplewood Housing and Economic Development Commission.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Neblet. I won't read the whole item, I think you can just take it from our agenda. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And the third recommended action?
Move to adopt the resolution authorizing publication of the ordinance by title and summary.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman. The motion to adopt the resolution authorizing publication of the ordinance by title and summary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you, and now, we move on in our agenda to, we have no unfinished business tonight, but we do have some new business. And the first item is the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license for Juicy Shrimp Shack. City Clerk Sint, this is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, we have Juicy Shrimp Shack, Minnesota LLC, requesting approval of an on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sale license. The city received applications from Juicy Shrimp Shack to open a restaurant at 1900 County Road D, Suite 135. Most recently, that was jam and wings, for some reference there. And they want to open as an on-sale intoxicating liquor establishment with Sunday sales. They are working with the city's building, health, and fire departments to get the appropriate approvals. And once they have those approvals, we won't issue the license until they've received all those approvals, which is very normal. City council approval is a required step towards that issuance. Background investigation was conducted on Kay Jong Vang. She is the owner establishment and manager, and nothing was identified to prohibit the issuance of the license. And Chief Nado has met with her regarding general expectations of liquor service. So, tonight, we are looking for a motion to approve the issuance of the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sale license for Juicy Shrimp Shack, Minnesota LLC, at 1900 County Road D, Suite 135. And Ms. Vang is here tonight.
Would you like to come up and address the council, please? Could you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Kay Jong Vang.
And tell us about your, the restaurant that you're going to be opening.
It's a Cajun seafood boil restaurant, so-
You have to speak up a little bit louder.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is a Cajun seafood boil restaurant. We currently have a location in Wisconsin, so this is going to be our second location. It is a family-oriented restaurant.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember Juneman. Councilmember Juneman is our longest sitting council member, and she generally kind of lays out the rules of Maplewood to our new businesses that serve alcohol, because we are very serious about not serving minors in our city. So, Councilmember Juneman?
Could you tell me what experience you have in handling liquor sales?
We currently have a liquor license. We've held it for a year now, and-
Any issues, any problems?
No issues.
Okay, as she just said, but I'm the one who gets to pound it in. We really, really, really don't like it if you serve liquor to minors. And it's reflected in our fines if you happen to fail a compliance check. But, it's more than that. It's what this city is about, and we value our youth, and we don't want them being exposed to things they shouldn't have. One of them is liquor at an early age. Do you have a plan for how you're going to train your help to make sure they don't serve it?
I met with Chief Nado, and he did recommend that there is an alcohol association that provides training. So, that is something that we will be looking into, to make sure that all of our servers who will be serving alcohol-
Yes, I would strongly encourage that. You know, people come back in a year or less and boo-hooing because somebody made a mistake.
Right.
And the other people up here might be nice. I'm not nice even for boo-hooing. It's that important to me.
Right.
And I'm not a teetotaller, and I think alcohol is fine in the right place by the right people. But, never to people underage. Remember that. Say it over and over to yourself in your sleep, because otherwise, you'll have to come back and face me.
Anything else, council members? Do I have a motion? Oh, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for picking Maplewood to open your restaurant, and we look forward to watching your success.
Thank you.
And he's nicer than I am.
And I have to say that the name of your restaurant has just made me hungry. It has. It sounds, yeah, very good. Yeah. Very good idea. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday sales license for Juicy Shrimp Shack, Minnesota LLC, DBA Juicy Shrimp Shack, at 1900 County Road D, East Suite 135.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Neblet. Motion to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor and Sunday license sales for Juicy Shrimp Shack. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome to Maplewood.
Thank you.
And behave.
And welcome.
And welcome. Next on our agenda, we have the ordinance. We're following up on the dog license ordinance. Ms. Sint, this is your topic tonight, again.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, back on June 24th, we discussed dog licensing at length.
Ad nauseum.
So, I believe I was tasked with bringing back an ordinance that removed the dog license and small kennel license requirement for Maplewood residents, but retained the requirement to have rabies vaccination, identification, and establish maximum at different residence types. So, we were looking at the code, and even though there were only, there were two sections to be taken out, the one dealing with permits, and then one dealing with small kennel license, it became apparent that license or permits were throughout the code. And so, the cleanest thing was to repeal and replace it without that language in there. And when we were doing that, as we looked at it, we found remnants of old language. There was a cat in there still. We found some terms that were defined, that were not used anywhere any longer. So, it was probably just from different times where there were amendments, that things just weren't completely cleaned up. So, we did our best that we could. Staff looked at it, council looked at it, and also, the PD. So, we all had everybody looking at it to see if it accomplished what we were hoping for. One of the things we did, we got rid of some redundancy about cruelty to animals that was listed earlier in the chapter, and also about some violations that actually were state statute-driven. And so, just to kind of highlight some of the proposed changes, one of the things is we took it from a three-month dog to a six-month dog. Everybody, all the other cities had six months. If you've ever owned a pet, you will know that getting rabies vaccination completed by three months is almost impossible. By the time you find it, and fall in love with it, and get it home, and it just doesn't work. So, six months is a feasible time. We also spelled out the differences for the maxes, the maximum dogs. So, there were three in single-family, two in double, and then, one in the multiple dwelling when it came to the rabies vaccination. The way it's worded is that they must have the dog vaccinated and be able to provide proof upon request of the officer. And that typically is only when there is a dog bite that has occurred. Also, identification requirement, we are saying that a dog needs to have on them identification, which also includes a microchip, because that will give owner and contact information. Or it could be a rabies vaccination tag. It can be just a personalized tag that somebody buys, or an inscribed collar.
Or the dog could carry its purse.
That's right. Absolutely. And one thing to note is that the dangerous dog and the potentially dangerous dog division, the only thing that changed is that it went from Division 5 to Division 4. And then, there was also some comments made on the 24th about registration. And we looked and found that there are many national registration programs out there. We gave a sampling in the packet of just five of them that we found. Some of them are free, some of them require a tag. There's a lot of different ways that people can get their dog identified. If somebody still wants us to have their information, we gladly will take it, we'll put it on the spreadsheet. But, there really are probably more efficient ways for them to register, because then, when people find the tag, or find the dog, they can just use their cellphone and call what's the number that's on there. So, with that, I believe we've presented what we were asked to do, and we are looking for two separate motions. One to approve the ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 10, Article 3, dogs. And the second one, a motion to approve the resolution authorizing publication by title and summary.
Thank you for helping us through this whole process. I know, I did underline that we spoke at length at the council meeting. Very, very true. But, I think it was a spirited discussion, and I think that ultimately, that's what gets us to the best result. So, with that, Councilmember Juneman?
I have a question. It's obvious, it's laid out in here, but I presume we're going to be publicizing this in one way or another, probably in the Maplewood living, among other ways. And apparently, some people don't understand what restraint means. It's better known as the leash law. And I say this not the least bit tongue-in-cheek. There are people who walk their dogs off-leash that think they have them under control. That is, of course, until they see a rabbit or your dog. So, I think we need to reiterate that, as long as we're bringing up the topic, that restraint means on-leash. You can have the best intentions of this well-trained dog in all the world, but, so it's a good time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I too wanted to thank Ms. Sint for all of her hard work navigating through this. I'm the one that sort of started all of this. And I want to thank my colleagues for working through this. I think, as we often find, we make better decisions as a group than any of us do individually. And I think this is a great example of us being able to work through something like this. I just think, I really appreciate our willingness to look at the way we've done things before, and really evaluate what is the value of that in the context of today versus when it was created, and not just keep doing it because we've always done it. And, you know, sometimes, we'll find that we should keep doing what we've been always doing, because it's great. And other times, we'll find that maybe it doesn't make sense as much as it used to. So, I'm really grateful that we've been able to have this discussion and work through that, and hopefully, simplify our government and our relationship with our residents a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council members, do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve the ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 10, Article 3, dogs.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Smith. A motion to approve the ordinance repealing and replacing Chapter 10, Article 3, dogs. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing publication of the ordinance by title and summary.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Juneman. The motion to approve the resolution authorizing publication of the ordinance by title and summary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we are done talking about dogs. And thank you again for all of your hard research. I can't believe how deeply you researched that, all of that data. That was a lot of legwork, but it really helped us. So, thank you very much for that. And now, we-
Thank God knows, we need help.
We are moving on to talking about garbage and recycling. John, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. So, I have a PowerPoint presentation for you. I'd like to go over some of the details of our request for proposal. So, tonight, we have an agenda item called Request for Authorization to Negotiate a Draft Residential Curbside Trash and Recycling Contract with the Top-Ranked Respondents. First, I wanted to touch on the history of the city of Maplewood's trash and recycling. Currently, we contract with Republic Services for trash hauling and yard waste. That's residential. It's a, the current contract is a two-year extended- It's a, the current contract is a two-year extended contract which ends December 31st of 2019. And of course, the city did contract with Republic Services after we organized trash hauling in 2012, and then we extended that contract now until the end of 2019. They do curbside collection of single-family residential homes, and that's four or fewer homes. Manufactured and townhome developments can opt into the program but aren't required to participate. They collect trash, yard waste, as well as bulky items at the curbside. The city does supply the carts in four sizes and Republic Services manages those carts. Republic Services does the billing for the trash hauling. And currently, the trash collection rates range from $9.78 to $14.66 per month, depending on that cart size. And that does include all taxes and a 75-cent cart fee that the city of Maplewood tax on to pay for those carts. And then, for our recycling program, we have been working and contracting with Tennis Sanitation. They have a two-year extended contract currently that ends December 31st of 2019. It's curbside collection of single-family and multifamily homes. And then, churches and small businesses can opt into that program if they can utilize a recycling cart for their program. That is single-sort recycling. Tennis Sanitation supplies the carts in three sizes. And currently, Tennis charges the city $2.86 per household per month. And then, the city of Maplewood tax that on to residents' water bill, and that's $3.54 per household per month. So, this is the first time in, since the city has organized its trash hauling, that the two contracts are expiring at the same time. So, we took a look at that and presented the details to city council, who authorized us to release an RFP on May 13th of 2019. And that Request for Proposal for Trash and Recycling had three alternates that contractors, respondents could put in proposals for. Alternate one was for a bundled trash and recycling, so we'd have the two contracts together. Alternate two was for trash-only and alternate three, recycling-only. So, the outline for that RFP, as you recall, had city-owned recycling carts. Recycling contractor manages those carts. So, this is how we put that RFP out there, and these are the proposals received based on this information. We did outline that if you were to bundle the contract, you had the option to do the recycling billing, as St. Paul Regional Water Services currently does that billing. We were looking for small business, more small business and charitable organization recycling options in the new contract, and then utilizing recycling dumpsters at our multifamily homes rather than the carts that we currently use. And then, for the trash, some of the key changes that we are proposing in that RFP was that the fall cleanup campaign and the spring cleanup were included in the contract. Currently, we contract with a separate hauler to do the spring cleanup campaign. And then, also, city buildings and parks included in the contract. Right now, Tennis does collect our recycling at our city buildings and parks as part of the contract, but that was not the case with the trash hauling as we had a contract when we organized our trash hauling years ago. So, we couldn't bundle that into the package. So, we're looking to do that in this next contract. And then, we really want to plan for curbside organics collection, which Ramsey County, we hope to have that infrastructure in place by year 2022. So, for the term of this next contract, which we are calling out as a five-and-a-half-year contract, we would begin that program. So, we wanted to see some details on how a respondent would do that in the proposal. And then, we also wanted to look at phased-in, pay-as-you-throw pricing schedule, which would have more variation between the smaller cart sizes to the larger cart sizes, encouraging residents to switch to a smaller cart, reduce waste, and recycle more. So, with that, RFP released. The city of Maplewood did receive six responses with various alternates by that due date of June 17th. And that was from Advanced Disposal. They proposed on alternate one, bundled trash and recycling. Eureka Recycling, alternate three, recycling. Republic Services, putting in a proposal for trash separately and recycling separately. Tennis Sanitation, bundled trash and recycling, trash only and recycling only. Walters Recycling and Refuse, bundled trash and recycling, and then also just trash and waste management on all three of those alternates. So, the Proposal Review Committee did review all of those proposals and determined that they were all very responsive and competitive. So, we want to thank all of the companies for submitting those very thorough proposals. So, to examine them, we put together a Proposal Review Committee made up of two city council members, three environmental commissioners, three city staff, one county staff, and then we worked with fourth, infrastructure, and environment to do the cost analysis. That Proposal Review Committee, after looking at and reading through all those proposals, met three times to rank them and then held respondent interviews of a select few of the respondents. And that interview was held on July 8th. So, the first thing we did when we, before we even looked at the proposals, is we looked at the RFP and, of course, the criteria definition outlined those six criteria. And I apologize, I understand in the staff report, it outlined as, it kind of carried through, and it looks like we had more criteria than I'm spelling out for you here in the proposal, but there were six. And we asked each of the committee members to weight the rank of each of those criteria, and then we took the average of those weighted ranks. And we tried to get that to equal to 100, but because of the averaging, it did come out to 102. So, here you can see that economics, we were going to weigh the highest. Proposal content and overall responsiveness would be second. Safety, education, well, actually, I should say environmental, and then qualifications. Well, you can see the rankings on all of those. So, when we looked at the proposals, we ranked them all and then weighted out those average. And what we determined was that, one thing, we really wanted to look at the opportunity to bundle those two contracts because, again, this is the first time that the contracts expire at the same time, and this is an opportunity to do so. But when we looked at the various alternates, we determined that there was greater value of individual proposals rather than combining those. So, we are recommending that those two contracts remain separate, but that we make sure that both contract end dates and extensions should be kept simultaneously so the city can look at the opportunity of bundling in the future. So, with that said, the Proposal Review Committee did take the best overall scores in the alternate categories when evaluated against all six criteria. And that does include the lowest price, which was, of course, 33 points for economics. And we are recommending that the residential curbside trash and yard waste, top-ranked, was Republic Services. And the single and multifamily residential curbside recycling was top-ranked Tennis Sanitation, who, of course, are current trash and recycling. So, the next steps in this process is, will take a couple weeks to do contract negotiations. But because the RFP and proposals included a draft contract, it really kind of gives us a head start. So, we already have something to start working on. And we want to ensure that we keep to our very strict schedule. So, we call out this August 5th date of having substantial agreements on remaining points in place. And, you know, if things don't progress and we feel we need to come back to the city council, we would do so on August 12th, kind of with a contingency plan, updating the council and possibly requesting that you authorize staff to negotiate with the second-ranked respondents. And that'll really keep everyone on track and know that the city of Maplewood is serious with moving forward with our contracts. And then, we are planning to have those draft contracts complete by August 26th and bringing those back to the city council for review and approval on September 6th. Finally, there's a few key issues that we wanted to bring to your attention. The cart issue, as you know, the city of Maplewood purchased trash carts in 2012 for our trash hauling program. And we did that with a seven-year utility bond, which has now been paid off as of January of this year. And the city does charge that 75 cents per household per month to cover the cost of the carts. So, we'll really need to take a look at a cash flow plan for replacement trash carts. You know, each year, we're going to need to replace some. They, you know, they're warranted for 10 years, but sometimes they walk off to people's cabins or, you know, more and more people are moving in, so we need new carts. So, that's the replacement cost. And then, a financial management plan to determine a future cart fee. You know, will that be 75 cents? Will we need to increase that? So, we'll look at that and include that in the contract language. And then, the recycling carts in the RFP, of course, we did outline that the city would own the recycling carts. We are looking at the option of working with Ramsey County Public Entities Grant that would cover one-half the cost of those recycling carts, which we estimate 12,000 recycling carts at $55 will cost $660,000. So, the county would cover $330,000 of that cost. We do call out one opportunity for funding those in the recycling reserve fund. And then, of course, looking at the multifamilies in using the dumpsters. So, we called that out in the RFP, but we did ask our haulers, the companies, to submit, you know, innovative approaches, new ways of dealing with our trash and recycling. And Tennis came back with two options for recycling carts. One is to maintain the Tennis-supplied carts that currently are on the street, and the other is to pull those in and then, of course, roll out the city-owned carts. And the pricing on that was lower pricing for the Tennis-supplied. And we did pose that question to Tennis Sanitation, asked you, why would you propose lower pricing when they're your carts out there? And the response was that, due to cart maintenance and management and so forth, they felt that they might need to hire an additional employee to manage that cart inventory and therefore the difference in the cart fees. So, the final timeline here is tonight, we're hoping that the city council authorize city staff to begin negotiations with the two top-ranked respondents. Again, August 5th, having those substantial points on the draft contract complete. August 12th, we'd have that contingency plan, which we hope we don't have to follow through with. August 26th, draft contract complete. September 9th, city council meeting to authorize the execution of the contract. September 23rd, pending the recycling cart issue, we would authorize a purchase of recycling carts. And if we did purchase those, we'd roll them out in December. And then, the new contracts would begin January of 2020. So, the recommended action for the city council tonight is to authorize city staff to negotiate draft, separate residential curbside trash and recycling contracts with the top-ranked respondents, which were Republic Services for trash and yard waste and Tennis Sanitation for recycling. Thank you.
Thank you for an excellent report. And I want to thank Councilmember Juneman and Councilmember Knutson for helping through this process. It's very important, and the one thing that it really shows me, because I think we've always had, well, we've had a really good recycling and trash system in our city. And I was very pleased when I was reading my council packet to see that the number-one, ranked company for trash and recycling are the same companies that we're using right now, which verifies for me that we're doing the right thing. Sean, I had one question for you, and this just came up today. Okay? So, I'm going to throw it out to you. You talked about, in terms of Republic Services, the trash collection rates, and I just want to confirm it because today, I actually called Republic because I need a pickup of an item at my house, and so I was going to schedule that. And while I was waiting on the phone for time, I pushed another button and thought, you know, I might as well downsize my cart while I'm at it because I'm trying to recycle so much more. I just don't need the size cart that I have. But the price that I got for the smallest cart was 12-something, 12 and change. 12, I forget, it was 12.28. That was a 20-gallon cart. And so, that would be, I mean, $9.78 plus taxes maybe and the 75-cent cart fee. Because that was the cheapest rate that I got today was 12-something. And it might be 28. I think it was...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the 20-gallon, you know, that comes in a every-other-week collection and an every-week collection. So, the 20-gallon every-other-week is $9.79, and that does include the taxes and the 75-cent cart fee.
And the every-week, is that the difference?
And then, the every-week is...
It's the 12.
Actually, that's the 9.78. The every-other-week is 7.15. So, unfortunately, you were misquoted pricing. The 12.92 is actually a 65-gallon. So, we'll have to work on that.
Republic, do you have an answer for that?
I'll look into that.
Okay. Would you please?
That doesn't sound correct. I'll look into that.
Yeah. Because I specifically talked, and the smallest one was a 20-gallon, so those numbers don't match up with the numbers that you're giving us tonight. So, it's good that I got that.
No, I apologize for that confusion. You know, as a contract company and a national call center, on occasion, there are some issues that we'd like to see improvements on in a new contract.
And it happened to me today. Sorry about that, but it did. I'm glad to have got it. Okay. Yeah. Councilmember Juneman?
Funny you should bring that up. One of the things that is on here, you'll notice that we're authorizing them to negotiate with our two highest-ranked companies. And the reason there aren't any more details than that is because they need to have the details and we don't publicly at this point to negotiate with these people. But I will, I will come out with this one because it came up at every single meeting, and we aren't putting it down, and poor Romack already knows this, that we had some issues with the National Call Center. Because when we signed a contract with them a long many years ago, they promised us our own call representative, as in Maplewood. And so, they went to call centers, which we can't control, but we can control the fact that they dang well better have somebody that knows Maplewood information. And we pointed out some times when that didn't happen, and now we have another one. And so, that's going to be one of the negotiating points, and Romack is more than aware. But as I pointed out at our meeting, he's just the one in the hot seat. And we requested of him to push it uphill in his organization, so to speak. And, you know, whenever you are negotiating a new contract, the power's in your hands, not theirs. And that's why the contingency is here.
Okay.
They are going to try to negotiate as best they can. But if they're unhappy with what we try to negotiate, there's a backup company in the wings.
Yeah. I'm certainly hopeful that we'll be able to negotiate it because I think it's been a great relationship.
I do, too. But, you know, that's the beauty of negotiating.
Sure.
For this many houses, it's a contract with some oomph in it, and you can say, look, this is what our residents are going to get. And I have to say, this process was exhausting. Bill and I have read so much about trash and recycling, our eyeballs were falling on the table. And it was a lot compacted, as you can see, into a very few days. But I have to say, I think it was really well-done. Sean did so much work, and the fourth people helped a lot. But adding that interview process was absolutely wonderful because you could actually get eye-to-eye answers rather than what I call dog and pony shows on paper. And so, it was really a worthwhile process. So, I think people can rest assured we have done the best we can for our residents.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Sean and to Councilmembers Juneman and Knutson for all of your hard work on this process. I know these reviews are incredibly difficult. When it comes to customer service or some of these things, are there tracking and metrics we might be able to look at? Because I agree with Councilmember Juneman that this is critically important. I also get a little nervous when we start to talk about evaluating big customer service organizations anecdotally because, first of all, we only hear about bad organizations anecdotally because, first of all, we only hear about bad things. And two, we can't expect anyone to have perfection, and things are going to mess up. So I don't know if we look at, you know, a combination of hold times and escalations and things like that to be able to set some benchmarks and evaluate that from a data-driven perspective. I think that might be, because I do think we have to watch out for that, but I want to do it fairly.
Sean is probably the one to tell, talk about that.
Sean, do you want to comment on that?
I think that's a great idea, something that we should ensures in the contract. When we did the interview, one of the questions we asked was, what is the chain of, you know, reaction time for when a customer calls with concerns? You know, who does it go to first, who does it goes to second? So we did gain some insightful information with that, and I think we can use that then to come up with more of a metrics. I think, you know, any contract is really going to take some staff time to manage. And, you know, doing those random calls on our own to ensure that the customer service is following through with what they should will be important. So I'm not sure what the other metrics might be, but certainly something we'll discuss with our negotiation team, which will include FOTH and the county, of course, have vast experience in negotiating with trash and recycling contractors.
Here, Mayor.
Councilmember Smith, and something else?
Just gonna say, so Ms. Smith, well, I can share with you, I get a monthly scorecard from my customer service group, and it's, I can share with you what those metrics are. But it is things like drop calls, hold times, escalations, and I would assume that Republic has the capabilities to track those things. And you can get a pretty good idea from a very highly-measured perspective how well they're doing.
And, of course, they do submit monthly and yearly reports, so that could be something that we add on to that report.
Okay.
And if I might...
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. If I might, in the process of discussing this, they kind of admitted, and so now they're more on point, so this will part of the negotiation, there's no doubt, that they were kind of doing it too anecdotally, if you will. So now we can just, if you, Sean so desires, turn up the heat. Because it's been, it was a conversation piece that we said it needs to be better and it needs to be accurate. Our biggest argument was accuracy because in a national call center, we have some better things in our contract than other, some other cities have. And people called to get information, and it was the wrong information. So they are already aware of that.
My comment would be that I think the metrics are very important and that we not just go with anecdotal situations. I will say that what I did on the website today was I put in my zip code in order to then, so I was assuming that the person that I was talking to then knew where I was, I mean, it was very specific as to who I should call and the number that I should call. But I think the metric thing, I think it's a very good idea. So councilmembers, do we have a motion? We have two, or one motion tonight on this.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Well, if nobody else wants to do it. I move a request for authorization to negotiate a draft residential curbside trash and recycling contract with the top-ranked respondents.
Second. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson, authorization for city staff to negotiate draft, separate residential curbside trash and recycling contracts with the top-ranked respondents. Any further discussion?
One thing we should thank our environmental commissioners, too, because they gave a lot of time, took time off from work.
We will do that as soon as we're done with the vote. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is true, I think. Is anyone here from the commission?
No.
Okay.
We exhausted them. They couldn't come tonight.
Thank you very much because the, it certainly is very important work that they did and taking time off work that really goes above and beyond the call of duty. So thank you to our commission members also for looking through this so that we can get the best contracts for trash and recycling with our businesses. So, onto the next agenda item. Pardon? Well, Michael Martin, you are next. Next, we have the Frost English Phase III Term Sheet with Maplewood Commercial.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Before you tonight for your approval is a term sheet with Maplewood Commercial LLC. Sherman Associates is the developer behind this project and the request. Tonight's discussion is in relation to Sherman's third and final phase of the Frost English redevelopment project. This third phase would consist of an 8,000-square-foot retail commercial building. The map that is now presented onto your screen outlines the area we're looking at. The blue polygon is what Sherman Associates currently owns. That's the vacant parcel, again, that third phase of this overall development project. The red square or rectangle represents the liquor store that is existing within this redevelopment area. And Sherman is looking to purchase this building and business incorporated into the redevelopment project. So that brings us what we're here to discuss tonight, and part of that is a gap in financing that Sherman is experiencing and trying to make this all work together. So the, to be able to move forward with this request, Sherman is looking for an additional TIF request for this third phase and a repayable loan. And again, the broad terms of these requests were discussed at your May 28 council workshop meeting, so we are following up from that discussion. Again, I'll just take this time to emphasize that a term sheet that you would approve tonight is not binding. We would still have to come back with a development agreement that would be approved by the City Council with all those final terms. So just to quickly highlight each of those financial requests, the TIF request was originally, I looked at $518,000 at council workshop. That's been reduced to a request of $477,000. And then the $600,000 loan, which worked towards purchasing that adjacent liquor store property. That would be for a term of 15 years with an interest rate of 2.5%. The loan payments would be equal to 40% of the excess cash flow. And I want to point out then, oh, and then the final payment would be a balloon at the end of that 15-year term. Do want to point out, since that May workshop, the, some of those deal points have improved in terms of the city's favor in our standpoint, where the term was reduced from 30 years to 15 years. The interest rate was increased from 2 to 2.5%, and the cash flow payments were also increased from 25 to 40%. So we feel, from city staff's perspective, that we're more comfortable with the deal that we're presenting to you tonight than where we started in May. So we're happy with the progress this has been taking. And just one final point, the loan itself would be secured by a mortgage against the property and corporate guarantee from Sherman Associates. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the term sheet as presented to the City Council tonight, and staff can stand for questions.
Councilmembers, do we have any questions for Mr. Martin? I see there's a representative from Sherman. Would you like to address the council?
Sure.
Give you an opportunity. Want to state your name, please?
My name is Shane LaFave. I'm with Sherman Associates. Mayor and council, thank you for the consideration of this term sheet. We've been working with Jeff and Michael to get this drafted and done. Hopefully, you will see that it is basically the same, slightly better in the city's perspective than what we discussed a couple months ago. Good news, just an update on the project, we have a purchase agreement with the seller of the liquor store that is ready to be signed tomorrow morning. We wanted to wait until we, you know, had this, this meeting here tonight before we signed it, but that would move forward full speed ahead with this term sheet. We have a lender lined up for the first mortgage who did the other two phases and is very happy with the site and wants to see this third phase happen and be closed out. So happy to answer any questions that you have, but just excited for the opportunity.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman.
Did I understand correctly that the wine seller purchased, the businesses would be part of the new building?
Potentially. We, as a company, actually have one other liquor store that we operate in Duluth. We're not necessarily in the business of liquor stores, and so, you know, we're taking a bit of a if-you-build-it-they-will-come approach. You know, we have had a number of businesses express interest, but the first question is always, when's the building going to be up? And we didn't have a good answer for them at the time. And so, you know, we want to get this underway and even start construction and see what the interest is like. If there's a lot of interest for the 8,000-square-feet we're going to build, then we probably won't be opening a liquor store. If there's less interest, then we wanted to make sure that this agreement, we are purchasing the naming rights to that business along with the sale of the land. So we would have the option to continue basically the operation of that business in the new building if interest wasn't there from other businesses in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. LaFave? Any questions for Mr. Martin? Phase three, yahoo. Oh, Councilmember Neblet.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I do feel better about what I am seeing today with the terms and everything. So thank you for getting in there and making it a better deal for the city.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of Frost English Phase III Term Sheet with Maplewood Commercial LLC.
Second. Moved by Juneman, seconded by Neblet, the motion to approve the term sheet with Maplewood Commercial LLC for Frost English Village Phase III. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, so my last question for you is, now that the term sheet has been approved by the council, when's the building going to start?
Sure, of course. The purchase agreement gives us six months plus one extension option. So we, we will begin drawing full speed ahead right now. We'll be in for a building permit within a few months here. Starting in the middle of January is not the ideal time, but the nice thing is that it's a slab-on-grade building, and we're not digging a big hole in the ground. But opening a building in June or July is the ideal time to open a building, even if you have to start it in January. So the plan is to start this winter and open next summer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Councilmembers, we have one last agenda item, and Mr. Love, you didn't get to start during our workshop, but you get to finish out the council meeting.
Mayor and council, if I could get the PowerPoint here. So tonight's item here is you're going to be considering the preparation of a feasibility study for the Arcade and County Road B area streets improvement. This would be City Project 19-22. So when we order, when we, when you authorize the preparation of the feasibility study, this is really the very first step that the city takes in implementing a street improvement project. As many of you are aware, Xcel Energy is, has a large gas trunk main project that they have going on. Phase one is being done this year and is from White Bear East. Next year, in 2020, they're planning on doing Phase Two, which picks up at White Bear, runs down County Road B to Highway 61, and it will cross underneath Highway 61, kind of near Rose Lawn. As you can see, it's towards the bottom of the map. And then it will run up Rose Lawn up to County Road B, and then west along County Road B to Edgerton. And the project actually will continue on all the way out to Rice Street. But county, that section of County Road B between Edgerton and Arcade, as well as Arcade, are both city streets. So their project is going to be digging up a portion of this road. This is why we're looking at advancing this project. We had this as a future project, but with Xcel already going in and tearing up a good portion of the street, it seemed very prudent for us to try to accomplish this, you know, accomplish the reconstruction of that road at this time. Part of this project would be to establish a $130,000 budget for the preparation of the feasibility report, of which we're looking at having our consultant Bolton &amp; Mink help us with the feasibility study. We do have a proposal for them for $94,100 for the preparation of the feasibility report. As you know, we typically do two street reconstruction projects each year in-house. We have the staff to be able to do that. We do not have the staff to fully do three street reconstruction projects each year. So this would be very similar to what we're doing with Kimley Horn on the Frost Avenue project. That was a consultant-led project as far as the feasibility report goes, but staff will still be involved with all the neighborhood meetings and the engagements with the neighborhood. The overall project's about 1.45 miles long on our PCI index, which is our pavement condition index. It ranks a 46 out of 100. So it is an area that is in need, and with that, I'm available for any questions.
Councilmember Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. When the $130,000 are expended, does that become part of the project costs, or has that become part of the operating budget?
Mayor and council, so that $130,000 is part of the overall project cost. And the, the reason why we have additional funding there beyond the Bolton &amp; Mink is to cover things such as soil borings and soil testing, wetland mitigation if we need that. So there are some other things that can come up during the feasibility study, as well as our independent appraisal evaluation for our assessments.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That section of Arcade Street is highly suspicious for such things as soil issues.
Councilmember Juneman, pardon me?
I said that section of Arcade Street is highly suspicious for such thing as soil issues.
Okay. Little swampy, as I recall. You know, what I really appreciate about this project is the efficiency, that the county's already doing something here, and we jump in and, rather than tear it up a second time, which would make no sense at all in terms of economics or efficiency, that we go ahead and do it. I really appreciate that. So councilmembers, do we have a motion?
I move the resolution adopting preparation of a feasibility study for Arcade, County Road B, area street improvement, City Project 19-22.
Second.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Knutson, a motion to approve the attached resolution ordering the preparation of a feasibility study for County Road B and Arcade Street improvements. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. And councilmembers, with that, Councilmember Knutson.
I just wanted, in thoroughly reading my packet, I came across this part of the consent agenda with all these performance indicators. I'm just absolutely overwhelmed, amazed, and proud on all this incredible work and measurement that's going on. I just shout out to the staff and everybody, I mean, just keeping track of this kind of detail is pretty remarkable, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned.